Average our results, and this is why we believe what we do.
All right.
Is that what I'm showing here is we took that core network of data, that close to ten, nine hundred thousand students. In the beginning, after one year, we don't have the data prior to A two A, but after one year, our average has been thirty-four percent truancy rates, and I'll get into elementary and middle school, but this are our overall results. After year three, that's been reduced to twenty-six percent. That's a reduction of twenty percent, twenty-six percent truancy. Now, the other side of it, which is really more on the K, the fundamental grades, it's really more the excused absences are the issue. In this case, twenty-seven percent of our, of our overall clients are excessively excused. So that means at least seven excused absences in the course of the year. After three years, we've reduced that down to nineteen percent, a thirty percent reduction. And then what's been a big focus for school districts along the way now, and the awareness of it is this chronic. This is at minimum ten percent or eighteen days missed in a school year. We've been able to cut that in half from fourteen percent to seven. So this is why we believe in that, on average, our communication because of the stuff that we do around excuse, getting more notifications out, fostering more conferences to occur and being able to track that. We have districts that tendency over a nine-hundred percent increase in communication going out and a thirty-five percent overall reduction in absences overall. Narrowing it down just to give you a sense for, for Jefferson School District of what you could anticipate after being on the program.
Mr. Owen, just a little clarification. When we have those percentages.
Yes.
They are percentages of absences, right?
Absences.
Not percentages of students.
Yes.
So when you say thirty-four percent truancy is thirty-four percent of the absences.
So thirty-four percent of the students are truant.
Wow.
So thirty-four percent of our nine hundred thousand students, thirty-four percent of them have at least had three unexcused absences or tardies in excess of thirty minutes.
Wow.
And to further break that down for you, typically, elementary school districts, we see around twenty percent are truant. K twelves are about forty, and high school districts are sixty percent plus. We've worked with some districts where it's been ninety percent plus are truant. So that is percentage of students that are truant. And when we work with the district, what we'll have is when you talked about where those variations were in ADA, why we don't focus on ADA is that that number can be influenced by so many different factors, whether socially, health issues. What we're concerned about is looking at these numbers here and tracking progress on that. Because if you're trying to, at the end of the day, improve ADA, you can't do that unless you're improving here.
That's true.
And ADA is never an apples-to-apples equal equation. Your enrollment's fluctuating, the student's coming in and out, again, all those issues. So we, what we try to do is look at these trends to see how you've been progressing over the years. Was that an exception or not?
Do you match that with the trends in ADA at all, though?
I let kind of the business department do that. What I try to do is come and provide to Julie and to the district what we're seeing in trends. So what we're seeing in a, by grade as a baseline year after the first year, how you're comparing year to year, and then also comparing how the district is faring across similar districts that we service and across our overall network of data.
All right.
So you can say, well, I think we're doing pretty good here. Well, let's see how you compare to our overall. Where can we have some improvement?
All right.
So I'll be clear, there is a little bit of ADA in here.
Yeah.
But I'll be frank, this is the stuff that we measure and what we look at and report to you guys on.
All right.
So we talked about this. This is K six, so here we go. Twenty-nine percent, close to thirty percent are truant. So this has actually gone up since I looked at it a couple of years ago. Twenty-one percent are excessively excused. So again, twenty-one percent of elementary K through six students are excessively excused, missing at least seven days, and close to eight percent are chronic, ten percent or more of the school year missed. We reduce that. You can see the following. So we had a reduction after three years of twenty-four percent at the K six level, ten percent at the excessive excused, and thirty-one percent at the chronic. Any questions there? Yes.
Do we end up being able to do an in-depth study? For instance, are more of the students that have siblings in high school are off on days that we're not off? Is that some of the absences?
Yeah.
And what it is that we, you know, there's sometimes reasons why.
Yeah.
Do they happen to go on a holiday?
Yeah, one of the things that we'll talk about is it's, there's a whole service team that's assigned to the district. And what we do is we take this data, and a couple of times a year, we're going to come in and do this breakdown. And it's really kind of a strategy session because what we are doing is we can report the data and the trends and can give you ideas of what we've seen in other districts. But it's a good opportunity to sit down with staff and principals and everybody to see what are some of those factors. So, for example, we have some schools that are, where, like where I'm from, where the year, the elementary schools are year-round, and the secondary schools are traditional. So at some point, someone's going to have to sacrifice for some of those trips or illnesses. So those are the stuff that we try to look at and go, here's what we're seeing. What is the story behind it within the district? So that is a, that's something that we really do try to focus on. And then on the middle school level, this is seventh and eighth graders, thirty-three percent truant, twenty-eight percent excessively excused, thirteen percent chronic. After year three, here's the reductions that we have. Again, what we see is a pretty steady on the chronic, almost a fifty percent reduction on the chronic. Any questions on those?
When I look at that improvement on the excessively excused, I'm wondering if you've found a cure for the common cold.
Well, you know, to be frank, it's actually, you know, there, there isn't the cure for the common cold, but there is the cure for the parent that wants to keep, you know, their child home because they're complaining about being sick. So it's, it's also working with them on, we understand a, our excessive excuse absent notifications are saying there's a certain allotment of absences that we know are going to happen when they're going to be sick. But after that, after you hit a certain mark, which is usually ten or twelve, then we're saying bring in a doctor's note. Because there's either something that's legitimately a health issue in the family, and we want to work with you on either on alternative study program, independent study program, or we know that it's just a way that you're trying to circumnavigate the intervention process of the truancy.
To some degree, that's true. I speak from a position of having had a son who, in his seventh grade year, missed twenty-one days of school, all of them to colds that were severe enough that they didn't want him at school.
But what's good about that is the idea is that, you know, if we can notify and have that connection and recognize it, then we, the principals or the site staff can talk to you and realize that's what's going on at the home so that we're aware of it and see if there's some ways that we can, we can help with you.
Right. I'm thinking, yeah, you know, some, some element of hygiene education and stuff that goes into that to reduce that because I'm only half joking about the cure for the common cold.
No, you know, I'll be, not to chew at the time, but one of the things that was big a couple of years ago, I was talking to a school district, and they put hand sanitizers in every classroom. And frankly, it didn't do very well because, in fact, hand sanitizer takes all the back, good bacteria off your hands as well, makes you more susceptible. So.
Right.
It's good practices, though. The other thing that we look at is in the subgroup areas as well. So one of the things that we talk about is our save rate. So the save rate is what we measure to see, are your interventions being effective or not? So if you, what we see is our overall save rate is fifty-four percent. So after they receive that initial intervention, how many of those students move on and how many have had behavioral changes? So fifty-four percent of our students that got the first intervention had no more than two additional absences and did not move on to the second intervention. And what we also do is measure that across all subgroups as well. And you can see that we have very good success across all subgroups as well. Because all of our communication that you know, and I, and I know that there's a high Filipino and Hispanic, Latino population as well, Asian, that we, all of our notifications, all of our correspondence that goes out, goes out in English and the home language of the parent, and that's a field that we pull out of the SIS as well. We believe in strong communication. So again, you're going to get that timely communication. I talked a lot about the comparative analysis, so we'll also measure the save rates of the district's interventions and be able to have early conversations to see, are they still being effective? Do we need to change some triggers? Do we need to change some codes? Do we need to change the incentives, things like that, so we can see if they're working or not? As I talked about, the district has assigned a client service team. We give unlimited trainings. We'll come in and train the staff in person, and then they have unlimited trainings via our trainer in our office on go-to meetings. They have an intervention manager that's going to be working with them on their data analysis. And then we also do an executive coach that's assigned, and they're really going to be your kind of public information officer of being able to make sure that whatever positive things that we're seeing in the data is put together and expressed. We want to make sure that the word gets out there. That can be including speech, data analysis, product, project management, and that production team. So we're here with the district every week, every day, every year. So the achieve initiative as a whole, the idea behind this is a three-year plan. We want to get quick wins. We have, want to set up for long-term success. So we see this as the beginning here, which is you start with leadership and the base service, and then you can get into these other initiatives based on what the data is telling you and what we see the district and the culture is ready for. So the base service, to go a little bit more detail on that, we come in and we do a welcome presentation to all the staff. We talk about what the expectations are, what it's going to be like, how to go into the system, do all the training. The IT implementation literally is about thirty minutes of someone at the district office time. Install the robot, that's it. We don't talk to them unless we see variations in the data or there's changes year to year. We don't want to be a drain on that resource. It's a critical resource. Training, I talked about that. Then as we get through the, as I said, it's about a two-to-three-week implementation period. And after that, we also come back to the district and the point people here and talk about how that implementation went, what were some of the questions, what were some of the things that were raised in those regarding attendance issues? So it's a, it's a, it's a handoff, first-look report. And then we will come in and we talk about the save rate, we talk about the attendance trends and analysis. We come into that first-year report, which is about six months into the year. And then we talk to those six notifications, and we'll come back and give chronic absenteeism reports to the site, breaking it down to the student level, all their attendance and their absence codes, whether excused or truancy, so we can recognize those chronically absent students and get early intervention with them. And then end of the year report for the board as well. So that's the base. Questions on the base?
I'm going to ask one right now that I've got, which is how much extra work does this cause for our staff?
Sure.
I mean, I'm seeing a lot of communication with you guys, a lot of communication with parents, and I'm thinking, how much is this going to?
Sure, no, the good, that's a common question because there's a lot of deliverables on this. The good news is that, for the most part, all of the heavy lifting is on our end. So we're doing all the data analysis, we're doing all the crunching. So, for example, the notifications, right now, it's the site's responsibility to go in and, and print notifications out. What this does is the site still has the responsibility. It's a centralized process, but local control. So the sites still have to go in. We've prepared the list based on the trigger codes and the absences. They review that list, and it's defaulted to print. So all they have to do is indicate to us if they don't want a letter to go out, which we monitor those decisions to see if there's any issues going on. At the end of that week, we print and mail everything out. Looks like it comes from the district. The other part is the conferences. We're identifying the students that need that next intervention, that outreach. Our sites like it because it's one centralized place. I have all my student data in detail. They're at a quick at a glance, and I can track all my activity with it. It's not a lot of extra work for the sites. There's a lot of support that we provide, and it's very easy and intuitive to use, but you get really good results out of it. And that's why the principals and the site staff continue through our surveys and our summaries to like it.
So would, to some degree, it would replace what we're currently using for attendance tracking and so forth that they're already doing? So instead of being an addition, it would be an instead of?
Exactly. It would be a new process. But now it's a consistent process and timely process across the entire organization that we can have measurement and oversight over that we're looking at and report back to the district. Does that answer that?
Yeah.
Are you going to talk anymore about the tiers of intervention in PBIS, or are you done with that part?
Well, I will say, the only thing I will say on the PBIS is, is that something that we have in monitoring that we've been looking at? And that is the idea that we do believe in the carrot rather than the stick. So the PBIS model is the idea that everything that we talk about should be encouraging, should be positive, should be about the idea that instead of making, say, a state SAR, a SARB or these meetings to be punitive, it's the idea that the district has a lot of great resources out there disposable within the community, a lot of great community partners. So whether you are dealing with things like bullying, or health issues, or transportation issues, or daycare issues, that this is a way that we want to encourage you to have your child there. What's the impact of it? And begin to have that conversation and build a connection with the sites and the district so that we can not only bring to light what those issues are, but be a helping hand to address that. So we don't necessarily do anything that's PBIS other than follow that model as that it should be more positive than a negative intervention perspective.
But what about the different tiers? Because I've seen something about the first intervention, are those?
Yes, so the, the different tiers are, most districts typically do three levels of truancy. So first one is just that state letter that goes out. Second one tends to be a conference is required. So from that one, that's where we identify the students. The sites go in and track whether those conferences occurred, why they did or did not, and then we can measure that and see the effectiveness of those conferences as well. The third one is typically the next level, whether you have a SARB, whether you're being referred to that. In some districts, that is a DA referral. So as we're setting up this, we do have what we see as optimal configurations that we see work the most. But we also can just do exactly what the district is doing and build that into our process as well. So those are tiers. And then the excessive excuse, we typically do two notifications for that, which are depending on how aggressive you want to be. And we tend to be a little bit higher on the triggers the first year and then build into it. So maybe ten and twelve excused absences. So those are those two tiers, and then a chronic absenteeism notification and conference notification is what it is. So that's what we see as the tiers.
And is that already, is that compatible with what we're doing now and any of the interventions that we have in place?
Our interventions right now tend to be on the consequence side.
Straight to.
Straight to the stick.
Come to school, and if you don't come to school, we may have to make a referral to SARB. And if the SARB comes things, you may need to have a home visit by a police officer. And then if you do that and you still don't come to school, we may need to make a referral to the DA.
I don't know what person that is.
Well, the idea, but it's a good point. The idea is to try to get more early intervention.
Right.
Solve the issues at the site level and save those later interventions for the students that really need it or the families.
Because those are the interventions that are, that are required by state law. So that's, that's what we do now. We don't have the positive behavior interventions in place as well as we could.
All right.
So quickly, kind of go through this, just so I know we're getting late on the time, is the leadership part of this, which is what we believe is that it has to be from the top of the organization. It has to come from the superintendent. And Superintendent Vidalas and I have talked about this and the importance of it. And what's great is when you have a superintendent who truly understands and has a passion for it because it's believable and they deliver this. So what we do is we want to make sure that this is recognized and reinforced to the community. And what is important at the leadership level is then also important at the site and down through the organization part of it. So what we're going to do as part of this as, and it actually goes really well with the September Attendance Awareness Month, is putting together a press release for the district, talking and informing the district and the community about the importance of the, of why we're showing up, the showing up model that is not punitive, that here's the impact, here's some, some quick, easy-to-understand talking points about the impact that it has on their students. And again, making it known that we are a resource. We're here for you. We're here for your family and your students. So we'll put that together as a press release. And that can also be a combination of working with leadership for quotes and also board staff. The more that the board can be part of that as well. That's great. And then we send out a, a letter to all parents from the superintendent, again, reinforcing that model. Part of this is what we know from a marketing perspective is your brand. You have to say at least four times to make sure that people get it, and you have, but you have to be consistent. So that when I see it on our website, when I see it on that letter that I receive, when I see it in the press release, and then when I see it on, as part of this is an automatic dialer messaging, that I've seen this everywhere, so it must be important. And I'm consistently seeing it, so I should pay attention to it. And we want to stay consistent on that. And then we'll come in and do a status executive overview for the board. We'll work Superintendent Vidalas on that, so you can see exactly what's happening, those data elements that we're seeing, where our baseline trends are, where the issues are that we see in the district that we want to focus on. Come back in and do, again, at the middle of the year, look for what we're seeing as quick wins. Look for, see what we're seeing that's positive, and again, put together a press release for that to recognize that this wasn't just an idea that we had at the beginning of the year, that we are following through on it, and here's what we're seeing and the benefit that we're seeing for our kids and our staff, and making sure that that's out there. And then chronic absenteeism is incredibly important. That's a focus, so we'll come back and prepare an overview for the board on that and work with Superintendent Vidalas on that, on, again, what are, where are our chronic issues, where's our focus on that? And then coming in at the end of the year, again, looking at results, press release, year-end overview report, and the most important recognition program. We still have a lot of incredible work done, especially at the site levels, that you have staff that really care about this, that, that make the difference. So part of this is recognizing for them. And we'll work on what that criteria is with the district and come in and put plaques together for the district to recognize those principals and those site staff for the work that they've done.
Great.
So.
Does that conclude your?
That's it, other than, the other things that we go look at as we go are these other initiatives focusing on certain issues. Again, here's the, oop, the plan. So you can see that's what that fifty-two-five, that leadership and basis, what we just talked about, is all-inclusive in that. And then what you want to look at the end of the year, there's other initiatives that you can take on as it goes along the years.
So fifty-two thousand five hundred, that's, are, are we getting that from the state, or where is that money coming from? Are we achieving, are we, are we saving, that's how much money we're saving?
That's the cost of the service.
Oh, that's how much we're paying you? Oh, fifty-two thousand dollars?
Yes, for all that service, all that data analysis, and all the, all the direct costs that goes along with those notifications as well.
Oh, wow, we get, oh, we're paying fifty-two thousand dollars for a software?
And service.
But it's automatic, auto robots and auto dialing and the mailing service?
No.
I'm just, wow, that's, that's amazing, fifty-two thousand dollars.
So part of that, just to go into that, is if you looked at it from the fifty-two-five, based on what I find in state data, Cbed's J90's B2 report, just a quarter percent gain in ADA would result, that's roughly fifteen students. That's twenty-seven hundred days gained of instruction and a little over eighty-three thousand in average daily attendance revenue, apples-to-apples. It takes roughly nine students to break even for that fifty-two-five. And if you look at that fifty-two-five, again, something less than ten dollars a student that goes to systematically address all of those things that we just talked about in those early slides. So that's it, that's what that fifty-two-five really covers, and that's pretty much the, the presentation.
Also, so fifty-two thousand five hundred, our return on investment is eighty-three thousand dollars. So eighty-three fifty-two equals this. So savings of thirty-one thousand dollars, and then we also, money that we could save to, for classified and staff salaries or another fifty-two thousand dollars out that we could be spending on classified and teacher salaries? I'm just wondering where our money should go.
So, I think, actually, just provide some information on this. We, when Mr. Rizzo was here, we had a conversation with this organization. And at that point, the conversation was, you know, we need to try this on our own and see what we can achieve without this. We were able to achieve some, you know, I think two years ago, we saw some of those results. We continued to do this on our own. We didn't see any further improvement. We saw a, a little bit of a slide. And the only reason we bring it to the board is, is because we think that we can do better. We think that this, these services can not only help us with the culture of achievement that we're trying to build at the school sites, but it can also, you know, the bottom line is if we achieve the minimum of point two-five increase, which I think is very doable, if, if we're coordinated and together on this, we can see, you know, increase of at least thirty thousand dollars, perhaps even more. Would do nothing, we can expect what we've done the last two years. And, and hopefully not see a slide. Hopefully, we see a little bit of improvement or maintenance there. So that's, that's why we, we've gone this route. We want to see more kids come to school regularly, and we want to see that result and an improvement in ADA. We want to see that result also an improvement in our revenue.
All right. We'll go this way. Do you have any questions?
No, I was, I wanted to know how much it was going to cost. But, but also, I kind of agree. I just want to make sure that this won't be very, a, a big burden to our employees to accomplish. They certainly have quite a bit to do as it is. So if it's something that won't involve them that much, that's easy enough, then it sounds okay. But I really want to make sure.
Sure. I mean, the only thing I can say is we have fourteen hundred sites on it. The, we do a, a survey every year. And number one that we also understand is that you can't be seen as a burden. You have to be seen as a assistance, a help. And that's how our, our users, our sites see this as. Is it something that's simple to use, it's easy to understand, and helps them in their daily task in regards to these particular pieces of the responsibility? Okay.
Question, to some degree, you know, as, as Mr. Tidy pointed out, it's, it's partly, it's buying a software pack. Is this something that, in order to keep using the system, we would have to continue to renew contracts with you? You know, in other words, if we decide we don't want to go on, are we then sending all of our staff back to relearn what they were doing before with whatever it was? And I guess my other question for Mr. Vidalas is, to what degree is this beyond what we could do ourselves? And would it, in fact, be as cost-effective to, to do more of this ourselves as opposed to contracting it out? I mean, sometimes it sounds like a good idea to do it yourself, and sometimes that doesn't work.
And like I, like I said, you know, we, we have been focusing on this. You know, and I think that first lever, I think, I think is, is strong. I think the commitment from the leadership of the district is strong on making sure students come to school. The other levers, I, I think, are not as strong. I think we have tried what we know how to do. I, I think, and, you know, the letters are being printed, they're being mailed. Again, it's one of those things that Mr. Owen identified. In the list of a hundred things that site staffs have to do, remembering to send out the attendance letters is probably close to one hundred because there's a lot of other things that are more pressing and urgent. And so having that taken off their plate, that it's, that all they need to do is to identify, this letter needs to be printed, this one does not, may, may serve rather than generating the reports to identify the students and then going through. So anyway, I, I, I completely agree. We tried it on our, by ourselves. We've tried to focus on this on ourself, by ourselves. We've seen some improvement, but we're not able to maintain or improve upon it.
In essence, we, we lack a certain expertise that would send us in the right direction on this.
I believe we, we do. I, I, I wouldn't expect to see much greater gains because it's sort of like that Einstein saying, you know, if you keep doing the same thing, you keep getting the same results. I'm not sure what else we could do. I would be happy to entertain that, and there's probably other things we could do, but those things would require additional staff time to investigate and implement.
All right. You have any questions, Mr. Hassan?
Well, all the, all the concerns are, are in my head, too. But this, but this is a, a discussion or information. So, so we, we have a time to crunch the numbers and go over it and.
But actually, it's, it's kind of interesting because I just saw that, the next item is contracted services with school innovation and achievement, five-minute discussion. The administration recommends approval of the contract in the amount of fifty-two thousand five hundred with the innovations and achievement for attention, attendance, in which Jeff Owens is the VP of Operations. Services and software agreement, the cost of the contract may be recuperated with a modest improvement in attendance as a result of initiating the attendance and achievement improvement campaign for fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars. We got to talk about this more, I think.
Do you have any other questions, or?
Well, the, the, the ultimate question is always that we, we, what do we get for the money, and is it actually worth it? And how, and how difficult will it be from year to year? It looks like it's easier from year to year, but.
Yep.
But if, if, if there's parents and students that really don't value education, it's going to be difficult to get them to do so. And so we're, we're, all school diff, school districts are different. And, and I know that in, in the past, we did it ourselves. And I'm sure Marie, you remember. But it took, like, pounding on, on the secretaries at the schools to, to, to do the work, to, to make sure that the, the reports were done and the letters were sent out and the phone calls were made. And, and we had to bribe everybody, you know, to do that. You know, the, the, the student body got extra money for, for their, their things, and the school got extra money. And so it ended up costing quite a bit, anyway. Just, just, just making sure that everybody was doing the absolute very best. Now, the one thing I think is, sounds good, is that we can opt out if it isn't working.
Right.
And, and that was for how long?
Six months.
Six months.
So would that be a half refund?
Pay the six months of service up to that, and then you're out, yeah, so fifty percent.
Is it opt-out like a contract that if you don't opt-out before this day?
You just notice, give us a notice thirty days prior to that six-month window, and you're out.
So basically, we have to do it within five months to opt-out, so then we don't get stuck into it for the rest of the year, like a, like a gym membership or a cellphone membership? Make sure that we opt-out.
Yeah, I think just the, the one point that I'll, I'll make is, again, it's, I mean, and the decision factor is looking at the outcomes that we've been able to achieve over these years and going, is that something that we would be interested in achieving ourselves? And then on the flip side, again, it does come back to the idea that everything that you're trying to do as a school district is not as good if the student isn't there in the classroom.
There, there is, there is one thing that is, is kind of intriguing. And that is that it, that because of what we have with computers, this can all be done very, very quickly. And, and when the secretaries were do, were doing it and, and the principals were doing it, it was a lot of work.
Yeah, because they didn't have the computer. They have computers to do it.
And, and they really didn't like it very much. But they did it because Joe threatened them with, with, with death, I think.
He rewarded them. That way, he rewarded them.
It's, it's not quite as much money as I thought it would be, but we, we, we do have the six months. And we do, we'll, we will find out how, how it's going to work. And, and we can, we can postulate how much money we're going to save and how much we're going to. we can, we can postulate how much money we're gonna save, and how much we're gonna make, and if it doesn't look right. And if you crunch the numbers, and it doesn't look right, then we can opt out.
Yeah, and like I, like, just to reiterate, you know, we have tried the incentives at the school site, we do have those in place.
Right.
I think the school sites that achieved the most were the ones probably that had the lowest attendance, you know, were able to get it up. I think they're all, in terms of ADA, and we have not, we don't necessarily have the
No, but we haven't done very, we haven't done badly with the ADA.
We're between, you know, the low, and we have everybody above 95% ADA. Our highest schools are a little bit over 97 and a half, I think. So we're in that range, you know, but we, we haven't looked at it in terms of the factors that Mr. Owen is saying, you know, how many of those are chronic absences, how many of those are excessive absences, how many of those are truance, three or more unexcused, and so.
I guess the hard part about this, that even though we, we default and can opt out in six months, it's, it's still, we still have to write the contract, approve a contract for 52,500, basically allocating $52,500 that could be allocated to, as I said, classified staff and teachers, and other school resources like books, pens, and papers, or, or here, copying paper, or copy, copy machine ink. It's, it's, it's hard for me to swallow.
All right, so I'm gonna call some of the.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
So I'm gonna go ahead and call two members from the public, get some other fresh brain cells on this. So the first one is Jamal Mogannam.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Jamal Mogannam, I'm a teacher at Fernando Rivera. And if I was on the board, I would have some additional questions. They might have occurred to you, or you might have heard some of the presentation prior to this, maybe not, maybe this is your first, first instance of what you've heard on this. But I would ask, is there a list of, a contact list of satisfied clients that can be looked at, and to be able to contact such clients? I would ask to see the written provision relating to the six-month cancellation, and in fact, before I approved or signed a contract, I would ask to read and carefully study the whole contract. Also, how much time and training would there be involved for classified staff and certificated staff? And that's it.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, those are excellent questions.
Angela Ross, again, definitely need to hear from the secretary.
Yes. Okay. I guess I came on a good night. I, it did raise some questions for me when I was hearing gentlemen speak about, about this program, and I thought, wow, this is such a great thing. But these are things that we already do implement. The question about the letter sent out, checking a box, and simply checking that box and they send it out. Well, what secretaries do now is, they basically have to get approval from the principals, so that report is only printed so that their principals can look at it. So it's like checking that box, and then sending them out. A lot of these things are done on computer now, and that doesn't change the fact that when you look at the truancies and you look at the attendance, those meetings still have to happen, and those have to happen by the principal. So, you know, whether or not it's sent out to a service, it's gonna have to happen somewhere in, in the principal's time to have those meetings. So, that's still time. When I look at the $52,500, I think, you know, that could be like another hour, we can pay a clerk at each of those school sites, so that we can be a little bit better in getting our job done, which is to send out those truancy letters. You know, and if time was one of those issues, then, you know, that would, that would help us to have that clerk there one more hour, so we can get our job done and get our attendance out. If the secretaries were trained on the, the items that we already have, the software programs, that would be Synergy, Synergy and School Messenger, on those things that I use all the time, and I find such assets to have, you know, they're user-friendly, they're great. But if all of our secretaries were trained on how to use these programs, we can call those parents as soon as we know that they're late, and I know that, that we do have an all-call that goes out after like 10:30, to, to ask, your parent, your child hasn't come to school today, please call the office and let us know why. So we get those calls coming in. But also, you know, we can make those calls too, by using that School Messenger. And in Synergy, those letters can be generated through there. I've set that up myself, and if we were to give our secretaries the training on how to do that, it's a click of a button. So $52,000, it's $52,500, that's $52,500 we can pay for another employee, so, those are just my thoughts.
Thanks for those comments. All right, yes.
What does really stand out to me, however, is that if we could get 15 more students in school on a regular basis, I think that would be a really great thing, because we are trying to get all our students to achieve. So if this program indeed can do something like that, and we would know that in five months, to me, it would be worthwhile, but that's just my personal opinion.
All right. I had a couple of comments. First of all, it seems like you've done your due diligence as far as all the questions that you know would, that would come up in the district, and it sounded good when you talked about the culture of showing up. But somehow, towards the end, we, we just got caught up in the numbers, all right? So I didn't hear enough about how we're gonna, you know, encourage this culture of showing up. And also had a kind of a question similar to Jamal's question, which is, are there any outlier districts? Are there any districts that have not seen any gains and had to exercise, you know?
Sure, I will say that we have, every client has had 100% success, and that has come through, maybe not necessarily ADA, but success in improving one of those areas. Now, through over the course of the seven years, we have not had 100% retention rate, because budgets are an issue over these years, and some people go. To the first question about the culture change, that really is critical, because what this is, you can kind of tell what it's turned into, is really the idea of getting a letter out. Well, the idea here is not about the idea of getting more letters out to get out more paper, or to get more autodiler messages out, to get more autodiler messages out. The idea is to have that letter, and that call, and that conference is an opportunity for me to speak with a parent and engage a parent. That by getting more letters out tends to be where we get more phone calls to the sites. More phone call means that the first person that takes it is the secretary. Our belief is that secretaries, it is much more important for them to have the time to have that conversation with the parent, and not have to run the query in Synergy, take that list over the principal, bring it back, edit Synergy if they don't want a letter to go out, print the letters out, fold them up, put them in an envelope, and mail them out. The better use of that time is to be engaging those parents, having those conversations, helping to schedule those conferences for those principals. And then the bigger issue is the, the did you know questions? That's the one thing that's kind of lacking that, that's been said in here, that we early on recognized, is that the did you know questions typically are difficult to find the answer for. Do we know how many letters are going out at the sites? Do we know how many letters could have gone out? Do we know if it's being done consistently? Do we know if those conferences are being done, or if there are bottlenecks along the way that we could address? And what is the total number of kids that we needed to do that? When we're looking at ADA, how many of our kids are chronically absent? How many are excused? How is it by grade? How is it by site? How many letters could have gone out, but it was a decision made not to send it? Whether it was conflict adverse, it was more of an affluent area, or I just didn't want to send that one?
So letters that could have gone out that currently versus what the software would do, meaning that did the secretaries send those letters out, and then basically, that would be human error, in which your software would not do?
It's not human error, the, the difference is, is that we could have designed the system to every one week, every two weeks, once a month, just go out. And there are districts that have a centralized process that do that.
And what we're missing is the idea that the letter leads to a conference, and then an opportunity, you said, an opportunity for you, or is it opportunity for the district or the principal to talk to the parent? Basically, the creation of an opportunity for your software to create a conversation or to have.
The software creates the opportunity for the site.
The software creates an opportunity for the site, but the site doesn't have a conversation, it's the principals that have a conversation, correct?
Well, the principal, I consider the principal and the site secretary administrative clerk to be the site.
Okay, so the site, so it's, it's actually a person that talks to it. So your software creates an opportunity for the person to create, have a conversation with the parent, and then the do you, did you know ideas, is how, what the metrics were, which, how many letters have gone out, how many conferences were being done? But the bottleneck is, and you were saying that the proof positive is having the, a site, which is a principal or a secretary or administrator, having a conversation with the parent, which, if they are already an employee, knowing that we need to have a conversation, and I think Synergy is the software program that we're currently using? So we actually already have a software program, and you'd be, that the staff is already known for, and we'd be supplanting that with your software program for $52,500, so then they would learn something new that already does that, in which the real bottleneck isn't the software, but actually the site, which is the principal that has to have a conversation with the parent, in which I'd rather invest more money for time for these people to have a conversation with the parent, instead of supplanting a software that we have, already have called.
Synergy.
Synergy, versus with what you have, which is safe. I'm just, I'm just shocked.
So to kind of address that one.
We all get it now?
Every school district has an SIS. Every student information system is what Synergy is.
Yeah, so we already, so we already have it, so, so you're saying that our, our software program isn't that good, and that your safe program would be better?
No, what I would say is going back to those six principals. I will go back to the six principals, and frankly, it, it really comes down to this. We have a proven system that gets the outcomes of getting kids back in the school. We have a proven system of creating a culture of attendance at school districts, where site secretaries, principals, counselors, VP, begin to recognize that we're not trying to move widgets by getting letters out, that what we're trying to do is actually engage parents, students, and have that conversation about the importance of being there.
But you said our site engages the programs.
The six principals are, that you have to have a process in place. What we have found, in the over, you know, I've worked in, over a decade in school districts, and I've worked with personally over 250, every site, just doing the mandate work. Our company did over 900 school districts on mandates. Every site did it differently, every district did it differently, and nobody at the district office could tell whether it was really being done, or had the data to analyze it. What we do is do the data analysis, and give that information and communicate that to the site, so they know whether it's the chronic report, whether it's by the grade report, or for us to see, what we have is the suppression, which is when they tell us not to send a letter out. That gives us an insight, is there coaching moments that need to be there? Is there a resource issue that needs to be there? But the idea of the system is that now you know those things. You have a process in place, you have measurement, you have oversight, we can communicate the results out to the staff and the family, and now you have staff who is doing the work now, that is printing and folding those letters, that they are educators. They know those parents better than anybody else, they know those students better than anybody else. So if we bring awareness, and ensure that that's being looked at, ensure that those conferences are trying to be done, that that secretary and that parent is in the, is in the office signing their student in late, if that student is coming in by themselves, they know what's going on in attendance, whether it's, this is their 10th excused absence and their fourth truancy, that I want to have a little encouragement and have a conversation with them there. It's not just to get a letter out, it's for that principal to see, here's my chronic absent students, not at the end of the year, not when they're trying to go to SARB, I'm seeing them right away, so that when I'm at the gate in the morning, welcoming them in, that I'm gonna look for them. Then I'm gonna be proactive and call them prior to even having to get a notification out, have an informal conversation. That's the culture change that I speak of, that it's the culture change of not just doing my tiers of intervention and my attendance, it's how do I foster this idea with our parents and our students? That nothing is more important to their students than showing up. All I ask of you as a parent, and I know everybody has issues out there, all I ask is get your, your student here. I'll be a resource, I will help you, if there's issues, we can overcome that, we'll do the rest. That's the idea of the culture, it's looking at it from the idea that this is an opportunity to talk to my parents, my students, not just to get a letter out.
So, and let me just add to this, the, yeah, you can get your question in, in just a minute. So like I said, I completely agree. $52,000 is a sum of money that we could think of doing something else with, and we have lots of thoughts about what we could do with that money. However, another way to look at this, and the way that, you know, certainly we've gotten that amount down significantly from what was first proposed to us, so let me just say that. Second is, I see this as an opportunity to not just pay $52,000. I see this as an opportunity to have an additional 50 to $100,000 come into our district. If we do nothing with our attendance, if we do the same with our attendance, we will, I don't think, because I, I know that our secretaries have worked hard, our secretaries have been trained, our secretaries are printing the letters, our principals are doing what they can do to improve their attendance. There are incentives at the school site. Some school sites are gonna get nice checks, you know, big giant pretend checks, but every school site will get some money. Some school sites will get a nice sum of money, because they've, they've made, they've made some, some changes. What I see is an opportunity for the district to see additional money come in, in terms of the revenue after we pay for this, that I'm not sure I can assure that we will see if we, if we don't try something different. So, we could keep doing what we're doing, we can, we can tweak what we're doing around the edges. The contract is there, in your backup document, you can, you can find the provisions that Mr. Mogannam referenced. We, I've spoken to superintendents who've used this system in their school district, they elected, I, I'm happy to call more superintendents if that's what you want, we could bring this back at the next meeting if you have additional questions. I'm happy to collect them and make sure that they're addressed prior to the next meeting. So that's what I would recommend, either we vote on this now, or if you have, if you can vote, you have more questions, please give me the questions, we can bring it back at a later date. It does delay a start time, but, you know, starting later is better than not starting at all, I think, but, so, that's what I'd recommend.
All right, Ms. Bruswella has a question, I have one more question.
Well, I'm just gonna ask the same question probably that's been asked twice already.
Why?
And, and we haven't gotten an answer yet. So, what district, or districts, something like ours, have you worked, worked with? What, name the district?
I'm gonna, I'll just start naming some districts, I don't know the demographics, I mean, Campbell Elementary School District, San, not gonna be the same, I'll just start throwing out names, San Francisco Unified, Santa Ana Unified, Stockton, Newark, Dublin, Livermore, Pleasanton.
Are all these districts past the, you were talking about, you didn't have a 100% retention rate, but the ones that, that have continued the retention rate?
I don't think we should ask multiple questions at this point.
Everything, all of those, on average, have been four-year clients?
I'm ready to either someone make a motion to table this.
Hour training.
Or, I don't want to continue this same conversation.
Okay, I just, I think.
Past 8:30, we've been on this long enough.
So, all right, thank you for naming so that. What I see right now is, we, we hear something that sounds good, but we also have many concerns. And, and I believe that, you know, I really have not been able to read the contract with every word that I could read it, because I just got back from, I mean, from Kaiser Hospital, and I didn't have a chance. I would like to, like you mentioned, I would like us to table this, but I would like each of us who has questions to either put it in writing.